Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Selenary Schools Board of Education Meeting of October 28th. And standing as you are able, we'd like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. And tonight will be led by our special guest, Emily Tizidis.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Emily. Good job. Perfect. I heard you in everything and didn't even have a microphone. Public comment? Do we have any public comment? We have no public comment this evening. I have no response to the previous public comment because there was none. Revisions and approvals of the agenda, please. Items can be added or deleted from the agenda, or the order changed. We need to approve that, though, before we can have our meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Berwick motions.
Berwick?
Oh, wait.
Who is that?
I was, I was getting ready to-
You want to make a change?
Well, yeah, I thought we had talked about a policy.
Oh, we can do that when we get to it, but-
Okay. Okay. Sorry. I was going to make a motion to, well, I guess-
Let's, no, we can do it, like, let's do it right now.
Okay.
Let's do it right now.
Okay. I was gonna make a motion to take off Action Item 8A regarding approval of the 7740 video surveillance and electronic monitoring. The Policy Committee has received some stakeholder feedback regarding this policy, and we'd like to have more time to investigate.
Excellent. I am in concurrence with that change. Do we have a second for the motion? For the agenda to be approved as revised?
Sure, Berwick.
Berwick? Do we have a second?
Second, Tizidis.
That, you actually made the first motion, so, didn't you? Jason Tizidis, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? I'm gonna have to remember this. Five, zero. We have two absences tonight. Student Showcase, oh my gosh, it's that time. Ordinarily Jillian Hayes would be introducing you, but Jillian could not make it this evening, so allow me to introduce Sophia O'Connor. And you're gonna introduce your Connecting Club. How's that? Does that work?
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, there we go. Hi, I'm Sophia O'Connor. I am the Connecting teacher, and I have a great group of students that are gonna tell us all about Connecting and Unified and all the great things that we're doing.
Okay, so we're Sleen Connecting. We're all Connecting to students. I'm Kennedy.
I'm Abby.
I'm Charlotte.
I'm Maren Robinson.
All right. What is Connecting? Students are taught to help and connect with their peers that have disabilities, whether those may be physical or mental.
Okay. So, in Connecting, we have placements, and, like, the different locations for placements are Pleasant Ridge, Woodland Meadows, Harvest, Heritage, the middle school, the high school, Liberty School, and then there's a young adult club. And at placements, you help each other learn, or help students learn. You lead by example. You just are, you're a friend to the other kids. And you help peers with socialization and education aspects. And we go to placements Monday through Thursday, and on Fridays, we stay in class and, like, learn things that we can implement in our placements, or things that we need to learn.
Connecting, oh, sorry. Connecting One is a program where we start everyone out. Students often come in with, like, little to no experience, and we get them out of their comfort zone. We put them in a placement. We put them in a classroom where they can learn hands-on in an actual environment. And we often stay in on Fridays, and instead of connecting with peers and, like, learning other things, we learn about the disabilities and how to adapt and, like, help them with them, and then learning the fundamentals and the basics of, like, all the disabilities and how the program works and what we're expected to do, along with, like, all the basics, like, the Polar Plunge and the Spirit Weeks and stuff. We learn about, like, how we can be implemented into that as a first year.
Okay, and then Connecting Two is, like, the class that you can take if you really liked Connecting One and, like, you wanna continue, like, the goal and inclusion and everything like that. We're all Connecting to students. Connecting Two is more, like, leader-focused. You're focused on leading and, like, setting an example to your peers. You help organize the Unified Advance Inclusion Week, and you'd help design a t-shirt, like the ones we're wearing. It's student-led, so it's a little less, like, students are kind of, like, helping, like, organize, like, the Spirit Week things and, like, what you want on your t-shirt and stuff like that. And then you still go to placements, Monday through Thursday. It's, like, you're still, like, getting the contact with the kids. And then we do, like, fun trips. Like, we go on a holiday shopping trip, which is, we each, like, have, like, a student that we're paired up with, and we help, like, they have a Christmas list, and we go shopping with them and get things off their Christmas list, and we go bowling, and do, like, a bunch of fun other trips.
So, then we have Unified. So, there's three different sections for Unified. So, there's Unified PE, which I'm in, and it's super fun. So, we have Gen Ed students participate with athletes, so that would be the students with disabilities. And we just play, like, regular games in gym. Like, so, what did we do? Today, we had a free day, and we just shot a basketball around, just did whatever. But other days, we have, like, specific sports we do. So then there's Unified Club, which is Gen Ed and special needs kids participate in the club, and there's activities before, before and after school. So, for example, that would be, like, painting, or, like, painting pumpkins, pancake breakfast, and then, or you just, like, go to football games, or fun things like that. And then there's also lunch groups where Gen Ed students can leave, like, the regular ABC lunch and go to Ms. Ghost's room, one of the teachers there, and we just have lunch in that classroom with all of those students. And then we have Unified Sports. It's a big thing. We, it's Gen Ed and Special Ed students compete in a sport. So, we have basketball right now, and then we're getting more sports soon. And then each team gets to, like, play at pep rallies, which we had one a little bit ago. But it's just really fun, like, gathering, like, each side, and it's just super fun. So, yeah.
We practiced before we went. We practiced Monday through Thursday. It was hilarious. We had a lot of fun.
And then we have Inclusion, which is just a full week to celebrate diversity and to include all. So, why does this matter? It helps everyone feel safe, accepted, and respected. And it brings a lot of people together, and it just strengthens the whole community. It raises awareness about different experiences and challenges people might be experiencing. And then what happens? So, the week, this is the week of the Polar Plunge fundraiser. So, Connecting to students create different themes for the whole school to participate in. So, like, last year, we did Stuff at Lunch, where we would play, like, you, like, grab cups, and you, like, see who gets the cup first. It was just super fun, and a lot of people, like, really liked it. And then whoever, like, wins at the end got, like, a prize, I'm pretty sure, I think. But the themes are always very fun and really entertaining, and they're always, like, everyone is included, so it's great. And then, done.
Okay. So, for the end goal, it's to send a lasting sense of belonging for all and just, not just during the week, but, like, trying to use that week to motivate everybody to, like, be excited about inclusion, be aware of it, and, like, implement it in everyday life.
Lastly, we have Polar Plunge, which is probably our biggest event. Students in Connecting and not can raise money and start their own, like, little site that they can send out. It's about, like, their why, of, like, why they would wanna raise money for Polar Plunge and the students with special needs, and just send it to families and connect outside of the school. And we raised money. And then the high school and the community raised well over $20,000 last year through this. Um, and then do you want?
Um, so, basically, like, what it is, to just kind of explain, is it's like a giant, like, tank of water that you fill up, and when it's really cold outside. And the students who raised money or just wanted to do it can, like, they jump in the water for, like, Polar Plunge, and people dress up in, like, fun costumes, and you can do it with a friend and have, like, a matching costume with them. It's a lot of fun. And a bunch of the students from, like, the class that's going on at the time, they all gather around, like, this giant vat of water and watch people jump in. And it's really cold, but it's really fun. And, um, yeah, they just express their love for inclusion.
And then our overall message with the Polar Plunge is, like, those few moments of, like, being uncomfortable in that cold water is often what these students experience on a day-to-day basis. And so it brings that awareness, and just overall connects our community. Everyone usually comes together for it and enjoys it a lot, so, yeah.
That's all we have.
Yeah, that's our program, yeah.
Wow, thank you. I, uh, don't go anywhere yet. Charlotte, Kennedy, Maren, or I left somebody out. Abby. Are there any questions from the board? Jason?
What other, what other sports are you guys considering bringing on besides basketball?
Yeah, so, I run track, and we do have, like, many students, like, participate in it, just, like, because they wanna do it. But I think we're gonna have a full other just section specifically for Unified, I'm pretty sure. And I think we were maybe trying to get volleyball, or soccer, I don't know, soccer. But, yeah, we're just trying to, yeah, just because basketball, like, isn't the only one that people wanna try. So, yeah, track and then soccer.
Awesome. Anybody else? Darcy?
I just wanted to say thank you for the work that you do with our kiddos and the inclusion. Thank you.
Oh, Jennifer?
I loved it, of course. I would love to hear one of, if you could each give an example of one of your favorite things that you've done since being involved in Connecting, like, what was, what was really important and impactful for you, and so others, because I think we have a lot of AP Cup students, maybe they could hear this and wanna participate in Connecting Club Two or to others.
Um, I think, just like, so, I, last year in Connecting One, I went to Pleasant Ridge, where I used to go in elementary school, and I got to be with my kindergarten teacher. And I got to work with, like, so many different students, like, with all different kinds of disabilities. I think ADHD, autism, there was just multiple other ones. And it was just really interesting to see, like, how each of them, like, act, and, like, how you can help them learn differently, because everyone needs to learn in different ways. And it was just, I think that was really, like, it just helped me learn a lot. And it was just, like, I don't know if that makes sense, but, like, I just learned a lot by helping, like, each of the students. And they're so young, so, like, I really made an impact in their learning as well. So, I think that was the main thing for me, probably.
Um, my main thing was my freshman year. I was new to the district, and so this wasn't really a thing that we had in Ann Arbor. And I was able to join the Unified Club. It was called Connecting Club at the time, and we went with all these students to the football game. It was, like, the Pinkout Football Game. And seeing, like, everyone enjoy it so much and, like, have such a great time and, like, be connected despite any differences that we had was, like, really impactful for me. And it kind of shifted my perspective coming into this new district. And watching everyone feel welcomed was also just really inspiring overall, but, yeah.
Um, I don't think I have, like, a specific moment that I can think of right now, but, like, when I think of Connecting, last year, I had my placement at Harvest. So, I was working with, like, younger kids. I think they were in third grade. And I was working with, like, a really small group of students. It was just two students specifically. And I was there, like, helping them with math and, like, helping them with numbers and stuff like that. And there were kids that, like, in the very beginning, when, 'cause I worked with them throughout, like, the entire year, so first trimester through third. And in the beginning, they were very, like, shy. They didn't really, like, have, like, a long, like, a big urge to, like, learn anymore. Like, they just kind of, like, didn't really care. And then, like, being able to work with them throughout, like, all three trimesters and seeing where they, like, started and seeing where they ended, and knowing that, like, you have a part in that, and knowing that you, like, play a role in, like, these kids' success, while also growing yourself is, like, I think, such, like, a big, beautiful thing about Connecting.
Lauren, anything?
Do you have anything?
Well, that's cool. Oh, there is something for Mary.
My favorite part of Connecting is, like, having fun, playing basketball games, like, watching people do funny stuff. It's kind of awesome.
Thank you. Thank you to all four of you. And thank you for wearing pink this evening, too. Or that's your uniform for the whole year, though, right?
Yes.
Well, we were, we pinked out last board meeting. So, I just wanna say thank you for telling me the date of February 26th for the Polar Plunge. I've done it twice now. I'm ready to do it a third time. And I'm gonna invite my board colleagues to go, but if they won't jump, they could at least sponsor my, my jump. Is that something? Maybe. That's easier to do than jumping. And you're right, coming out, getting in the water isn't so bad. Coming out, that's a bit challenging. Sloshing all the way back to the place where my dry clothes are in the biting cold, but I really appreciate it. Have you all done it before?
Yeah.
Awesome. And you raised money for Special Olympics. I've been involved with Special Olympics since nineteen, a long time ago, back in the seventies. I started when I was still in high school, and it's, it's a wonderful opportunity. Well, thank you very much, and thank you to Mrs. Ms. O'Connor, wherever she is. She already blasted out of here, huh? Thank you. Are we posing for a quick image or not?
Sure, I'm sure Karen Davis could maybe take that picture.
She's got her camera. If you could join us over there, maybe put the title slide for your slideshow up, or, he's got something figured out. Ben has something figured out. We'd love to have a picture with you if you're okay with that. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Thank you.
really down to a science, aren't we? I think I'm, I'm really happy about that. Administration and Board Committee Updates will begin with Dr. Kowalski.
I'm just wondering who I'm gonna get a costume with and jump in the Polar Plunge. I'm still on that, so.
Or sponsor.
Or sponsor, but it sounds more fun to put a costume on, so. It's been an incredible couple of weeks across Selenary Schools since I last updated the board in a board meeting. I just wanna take a few minutes to talk about some of those highlights. I wanna start with the, the amazing Foundation for Selenary Schools and their luncheon. It was the first one I was able to attend. Lots of firsts, of course, this year, but just so incredible the work that they do to put that together, bringing awareness. Last I heard from Stacy, they had raised over $43,000. Truly impressive, great event that showcased the powerful, powerful presentations of our students, but also our teachers, who make the generosity of our community come alive. So, thank you to the Foundation, to all those that attended and were curious, of course, those who donate and continue to donate and helped organize such a great, great luncheon. And I will note, it's also, also great to see these grants come to life. I know the salmon in the classroom was a highlight I talked about, and can't wait to see those little salmon swimming around. Just last night, yesterday evening, I attended a parade committee meeting for the Chamber of Commerce, where we had two students, Cooper Bush, who won first place, and Marlo Samp, who won, who was runner-up for the Parade Logo Design Contest. They are both part of Mr. Rodriguez, one of Mr. Rodriguez's SWC, SWWC CT classes. It was nice to meet their parents. They were super proud of them, and I'm hoping to bring them to a future board meetings to recognize them as well. This year, we partnered with the Chamber on both the Parade Logo Design Contest and some art and essay contests. So, that's been really exciting and lots of great participation. Uh, just a reminder, since it's our last board meeting before the Sleen Craft Show, I'm super excited to see this for the first time as well. As a reminder, that is Saturday, November 8th. We hope everyone will spread the word about that. And just to note that we will have a free shuttle from Liberty School, and the entrance this year is off Woodland Drive. Uh, last week was a really busy week. This week is busy, too. But every night, we got to see students, and I get to, got to interact with students, and that was really exciting. Uh, we, of course, the, my, our team went to trunk or treat, so it was, I, I didn't even know there was those many families in Sleen. It was wonderful to see. I think someone called it a gazillion, uh, youngsters out there. Uh, thank you to the varsity football team for their appearance at Tailgate with the team. Another great opportunity for me to connect with some families. And, uh, I also wanted to, again, remind the community, especially our special education community, that CIEC has invited me for a special listening lab with them, uh, November 12th at Heritage. And that will wrap up my fall events, and then we are working on a January service project, where individuals from the community and students can join me for a day of service in January. More to come on that. Okay, I asked A.D. Mantha for a fall sports update, so bear with me as I talk through some amazing accomplishments of our athletes. They had an incredible fall season, and here's where we stand. The Equestrian Team, the team finished second overall at districts and went on to compete at regionals, where they finished sixth. Girls Golf finished fourth out of 14 at regionals. Boys Soccer were SEC Champions. They fought hardened districts, and they took Bedford to two overtimes and two rounds of shootouts. Congratulations to them. Also, Boys Tennis, who finished fourth of 10 at regionals. Girls Field Hockey were also regional champions. They beat Rockford on October 20th to earn their first MHSAA Regional Championships in their inaugural season. Congratulations to Boys Water Polo as well, finishing third at districts and qualifying for regionals this coming weekend. For Boys Cross Country and Girls Cross Country, Boys finished second at regionals, qualifying for the state meet at the Michigan International Speedway, which is this weekend. And Girls finished second at regionals, and will join the, the Boys this weekend as well. Of course, you might know that our varsity football team are SEC Champions and headed to playoffs, and that begins this Friday. And Girls Volleyball District Play begins on November 5th. And I'm almost done. Got a few more. Isn't it incredible how much our students do? It's unbelievable. Girls Swim and Dive, uh, they have an SEC competition that's wrapping up with Dive Regionals on November 13th and a state meet on November 21st. Boys and Girls Rowing enjoyed their intrascholastic fall season, which included several, several regattas. I know what those are. Uh, their postseason begins in the spring. And Sideline Cheer, we're there to support our football team and all kinds of things this, so far this year, and bringing incredible spirits to the game. So, congratulations to where we stand in fall sports. Looking forward to another great season, uh, winter athletic season as well. And before I close, one important reminder that Election Day is coming up, and I know I will likely hear comments echoed at the board table as well. Please, please, please make sure you get the absentee ballots in, and make sure you have voted for our CTE Millage, and make a plan to vote if you do not vote absentee. And as you can see, it's been an action-packed few weeks and months.
It has been. Thank you so much for all the updates. Student Representative Hayes is out on a deadline this evening for the yearbook, which is pretty intense. CQC will meet next month. Chamber of Commerce trustee Austin, treasurer Austin is not here this evening for a report. Foundation for Selenary Schools, did you wanna add anything to what Dr. Kowalski added, said, so far?
I just wanted to say that I did have to miss the fabulous fall luncheon. I love seeing it, but I was out of the country for work last week, so I was sure to donate when I got back. And thank you to all of the volunteers, the presenters, and the kids that always come and talk about the impactful grants, because that's what they're for.
Yes, it was excellent. Uh, trustee Hanson was there. I was there. And any other board members that I missed? No? Okay. Uh, Board Associations, I spent last Friday up in Traverse City for the Michigan Association of School Boards Annual Leadership Conference. George Coros, a Canadian colleague of mine, was the keynote speaker. He was very lively and entertaining, great workshops, but the, the best part of it was interacting and networking with other board members from across the state. One of the interesting things is that all the tables I sat at, the board presidents workshop and in other places, I met a lot of rural board members, board presidents and board members. Their issues stand in stark contrast to the issues that we have. Funding is always precarious. Finding staff is difficult, even right down to the sports and merging football teams together from other districts neighboring them. A whole different set of challenges, and it was really interesting to hear how- And it was really interesting to hear how they approached some of their difficulties. And they were open to ideas from larger districts like us. And I also, at the same time, met up with folks from Detroit, from Ann Arbor and other large cities as well. So it was a great, the networking was about the best, I, I thought, it had been in years. Uh, moving down the list, Sex Ed Advisory Board, anything?
Nothing since the last.
Nothing since the last. DEI Advisory Committee, I can say that we are meeting tomorrow and you, Superintendent Kowalski is going to be there and meeting the new members. Uh, Wellness Committee? Nothing. Uh, City of Celine, we haven't met yet. Cares? Nope. Voting soon though, right?
November nineteenth.
November nineteenth, they're voting.
Yes, they'll be asked to be on a December board meeting to present.
Super. Thank you. Um, so miscellaneous, open to anyone who has anything that I've missed? A committee? No. Or anything, observations you've had? No, none of the above. Jennifer Steppen?
Well, Rachel alluded to it, but I would also like to reinforce, um, making a plan to vote. Um, and I will look happy to doing that to support our CTE programs, uh, district-wide and county-wide. It's Tuesday.
Thank you. I voted already, but I didn't get a little sticker. They used to put them in the envelope when you get an absentee ballot. I didn't get one this year. Anyway, uh, we're moving on to action items now. We dropped the first. We're getting to a recommended motion. I'd like to entertain a motion to approve the reappointments of current trustees Stephanie Gray and Lori Byron to the Celine District Library Board for a two-year term beginning December first, twenty twenty-five, as submitted by Dr. Kowalski, Superintendent.
I would enthusiastically love to, um, make that motion.
Motion made.
Second.
Seconded by Lauren Gold. Is there any discussion?
They're both wonderful ladies that contribute a lot to the community. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
I would just like to thank them for their service and, uh, thank the library in general. I love that place.
I love the library too. I love the electronic offerings they have as well. Um, anything else? Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Um, um, somebody will send them a letter saying congratulations. Superintendent would now like to make a scheduled report to the board and you're going to do it from the front or from your seat? She's going to do it from her seat, so let's make sure the microphone isn't blocking your face too much and, uh, I'm looking forward to this.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to provide you, uh, with an update to my transition plan on this, uh, slide. In the slide deck, you'll see a couple of old materials that I gave you, one, one cold, I don't know, maybe tempered night, uh, back in May. And so it, it didn't mean just nothing. It meant a lot to follow through on that transition plan. And so I want to walk you through, um, some of what's happened, um, since I had the great honor to join you all here in Celine and then also, um, provide, uh, some recommendations and next steps that we'll be working on. So you might remember that from May through October, this transition unfolded into what I identified in that plan I brought you all that night, um, into three phases. And the first identified is the transition and the work, um, that I did to establish some very early on initial relationships and work with Dr. Latch and you all, um, to get myself into the community. On July first, I, I joined the team officially to begin that listening, learning process. Um, and so deepening the relationships with staff and families and launching the school year, um, for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year. And through the last month, a couple of months or so, um, we've been strength, strengthening some of the collaboration and getting some more insights, um, through community listing labs and other things I'll mention. But I like to coin tonight as kind of phase, uh, four, which is aligning insight into action. So how are we going to trans, how I'm going to work with our team to translate some of these things into action. Because I shouldn't have done that. So those are the phases right there. So the first priority that I had was to have some, some opportunities to have authentic connections and meeting people where they were. Um, so I engaged in those conversations across the community in the first few months. I just want to publicly thank the City of Celine for the many events that I joined that allowed us the opportunity to not have to build things from the ground up and just, um, work with some already great events happening in the community. Um, thanks to PTO and PTA, uh, folks who I joined in the early stages, um, at buildings. I've met with many former educators who've reached out, students, and I'll talk more about that, um, in a little bit. Built ISD, uh, connections with many of my colleagues at the ISD, of course, engaged you all in, um, one-on-ones in those first few weeks. And, um, ironically, the CTE Millage also provided many opportunities to collaborate and establish relationships around the community. So I'm very grateful for that and those were some highlights. So during this time, um, listening didn't end necessarily with just conversations. Here are some things, um, that happened during that time. So again, intentional school visits started in August when we launched school, uh, using again, Celine area community partners like the Rotary. I've been there, um, establishing strong partnerships early on with our SCA and ESP. And again, continuing to have, um, great collaborative conversations with you all as I navigate the last few months. Once school opened, it was, uh, obvious time to begin those school visits and work with administrators in their buildings where the work is. And these moments allowed me to, to begin to see instruction in the district, um, the climate and operations firsthand and really connect the feedback that I had been given over the summer to actual, to action and what was happening in the buildings and around the community. So I've synthesized from many of those things. We've actually tracked this in a document. Some of the things that I need to lift up in terms of things are what I've heard. So the first slide, and this will be available publicly as well, um, are things that were reoccurring themes throughout my conversations. So for families and community members, they're, they were remarkably consistent. People take great pride, as they should, as, as I do, um, into our excellence and the people here that serve our students and our families. They were, they are looking for more consistency across schools and a continued focus on whole child while elevating importance of arts, arts, academics, athletics and other things that students participate in. That was a common theme as well. Families also emphasize in some of the small group conversations, the importance of continuing to support emotional and psychological safety of students. And there were, there's been many key things from, key themes from staff that ironically are somewhat similar. And again, we've tracked this through all of the, um, community events. This came, this went all to a document and then lifted out major themes. So like, check, check, check. We heard this over and over. And those were, um, consistency across schools was ironically something that matched what we heard from families and parents in listening labs, especially around attendance, behavior, discipline, curriculum and daily operations. Time for, continued time for collaboration and learning, um, flexible and unstructured time to plan together as colleagues and professionals. Uh, I've heard a lot about the balance of and manageable workload from our staff and that ranges across the board from all of our almost seven hundred staff members, um, and looking at, um, protected planning time and balance between other tasks and instructional focus. And, uh, calls for increased opportunities to have mentorship and, um, we, we know that we are bringing lots of new staff on board. So while we're transitioning staff, having some elevated onboarding processes as well. This is exciting. So this is, again, just started because we just went back to school in August. So I got a little late start getting, um, in with students. So I've been in many classrooms. Uh, I would say probably to count, probably about fifty-five or sixty at this point. I tried counting those up by date on my calendar. I like to quantify things, uh, this morning. And I really wanted to have a number for you, but didn't get it. And October and November, I've actually had the opportunity, just in the last, yesterday and today, to be a part of two, um, great collaborations with students at Celine High School. I plan to visit Celine Middle School, uh, to work with students there and to have a, like a mini listening lab in November. I'll move to Heritage, uh, by December and then round out January by visiting, um, Alternative Ed and Liberty after their new interim administrator kind of gets an opportunity to get in here and, um, work with them. And then because our, of course, third graders right now are just experiencing the beginning of third grade, by early spring, I'll circulate to, um, our, our lower elementary buildings and talk to third graders more in the spring. And so those are some highlights of some of the, just some of the many great students who have informed my listening and learning phase of my transition plan. There were some foundational moves of phases one through three that I do want to highlight that were supported by, um, you all and the great team that we have here working, students, teachers, the core team and our administrative team. Uh, we established stability and momentum and entered the school year with a settled SCA contract. And I think that was very important and something I'd like to highlight is, um, something that the team worked very hard on and our teachers worked very hard on. And we're appreciative of that. Some, early on, uh, I've identified some possibilities to do some leadership pipeline collaboration. I'm working with a higher ed partner, I'm not naming them this evening, um, to look at a pilot, uh, condensed program for some of our individuals who may want to lead in this district and have opportunities to do that. As well as, I will not name tonight, but a potential ISD partner, um, within the ISD who has a program with some emerging leaders. So working on a pilot program where we can have some emerging leadership pipelines. Because of course you have to be credentialed and so those things we would need to partner with others on. Um, through some of the feedback I've collected, there's been, uh, they've lifted up responsiveness and follow-through from the team and from some of the feedback that was given throughout the summer. We have also, uh, in, through our theme this year, increased our emphasis on physical and psychological safety, connecting our Director of Safety and Security with, with not only schools, but the many teams who work really hard to support students and staff. And so those cross, um, departmental collaborations have been very powerful and we've already seen some great things come out of those. I would also like to highlight two things that are on that slide. Um, you know, I, when I presented to you, I had ten minutes to do it about some of the things I saw as opportunities here in Celine area schools. And one was, uh, leadership pipelines. And I made that promise to you that, um, we would be able to see that very visibly in the next decade, five, six, seven, ten years. Um, and I'm happy to say that that just started with identifying with administrators who are our emerging leaders. And that will grow into some things I'll present to you in the next few months as we continue to plan together. We've also, uh, worked really hard to launch Parent Square through the lens of transparency and being crystal clear about how we communicate with families. And so we've launched that How We Communicate series that I hope families are, um, enjoying and, and having clarity and, uh, questions answered through that. So there were some foundational moves and early wins, as I'd like to call them. But as I referenced, I would call the next several months what I would call Phase Four, which is aligning the insight into action. That doesn't mean that the listening and learning as a good reflective group of leaders and, um, staff members and students will continue to have that continuous, um, collection of feedback that will synthesize, um, and use to create, to create great systems for students. But I would like to look at how we collect and review and respond to input and, um, perhaps survey data. And so that listening and learning is going to remain central to some of the things I'll present to you in terms of next steps. I also would, uh, really lift up that we need to set some focus priorities together. I think some of those themes emerged from our work together in a recent workshop. And so I'll talk about some specifics here in a few minutes. And I'll be doing those things by continuing to be in classrooms and continuing to do some of the, um, more focused listening opportunities like the one that I mentioned with CIEC coming up. So I've identified, um, I'll tell a little story about what, why I call them big rocks. Um, you know, everywhere we are as leaders and, and as, um, staff members, we, we take many things away with us. And one, um, that came with me from my last post was the term big rocks and it became kind of a thing with my team there. Um, and so these are what I would say are the things we need to be moving and getting focused on very quickly and we already have been. And then we have the little rocks language. And so I'll talk about some of the more little rocks here in a bit. But these are the three things that I do believe, um, we are going to be looking at in the next few months and we'll be bringing to you in different pieces. Um, the first includes a reorganization of the, um, leadership of the district and looking at how we support mentor and create ways that our, our leaders are supported. And I'll talk about that in a little bit here. Um, to rapidly, uh, increase our focus on early childhood expansion. So engaging families, uh, in a more, uh, quick, in a quicker way and developing a unified vision around that. Uh, I'd also would recommend a planning principle that I will likely bring to you next school year to help with the exploration of what those partnerships and programs and onsite planning for the selected avenue, uh, looks like. And of course, we'll have to identify facility and funding options for this. And the third big rock, which is, which really touches many of, of the other little rock pieces that I'll men, that I'll talk about, is strategic planning. We have a waiting in the wings updated compass that was the, the product of, I want to say, hundreds of folks, uh, through survey, focus groups and, and a lot of great work that we did, we did pause on. Um, you hired a new superintendent in mid-year and we felt it was really important to have that listening and learning phase, um, play out and of course, continue to listen and learn, um, before we launched that compass. And so I'll talk a little bit about how that waiting in the wings compass could develop into a strategic plan of which the board will, would, um, adopt and have much input in. So, uh, I'll first talk about those three big rocks and then I'll end by some of the littler things that we'll, that we will bring to you to consider as part of the strategic plan. So the first includes a reorganization of our staffing alignment and how we organize our leaders at the, um, central office level and how we do that with our building levels. I've spent a lot of time studying those systems and looking at research. Hanovers are great. Um, and I'll probably be sharing that in the board update as a follow-up to this, is some of those structures and some of that research. Um, reorganizing our teaching and learning department will be part of the recommendation that I'll bring to you. Looking at clarity, coherence and aligned supports. Um, there's a lot of research out there that, that talks about radical reorganization of teaching and learning and high performing systems like we are, we already are, and how that really centers on like elevating students even further and closing, um, gaps of which I know that you know we have. Uh, the other, so the other piece about this is looking at a flat org chart versus the taller organizational chart, um, of which I'll be recommending. Uh, and again, that provides the opportunity to provide direct mentorship and support. And it also increases accountability and communication, um, amongst our stakeholders, like our families and our parents. So in short, uh, my first recommendation is around, uh, reflection of our priorities focused on teaching and learning and we're, um, you know, putting the supports there and making sure they're structured for clarity and designed so that we know it's serving students and their success. So for early childhood expansion, um, I wanted to talk a little bit about the great work that's already been done. If I could, I don't know, get to that slide. What's happening? Um, so from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-four, there was a program review. There was lots of colla- collaborative planning and program curriculum alignment that's happened. We also opened, um, we doubled the capacity at Liberty School with GSRP. And we have now an early childhood program director who really is laser focused on programming, um, and the professional learning part and wrapping around all of those pieces. So we'll now be looking at ways that we can take that work. I think the battery's dead. Or it's dying, just as an FYI. Um, so now we'll be kind of ramping up this work to continue meeting with stakeholders. Um, I, there'll be an emphasis on meeting with some, um, private providers of wraparound services, before and after care, um, to understand partnership potentials with them. We'll continue to involve our kindergarten teachers in conversations. So what I'm seeing as part of my listening and learning phase is, um, in comparison to other, um, organizations I've been in, we don't know a lot of our kindergartners when they come to us versus where I've been before, where we knew about seventy-five percent of the kindergartners through the early childhood programs we had. And I do believe that the, the lift that's causing on our early elementary buildings is real and something that, um, we, we really need to take a look at systematically. So we'll be looking, um, to ensure that we have, you know, needs assessment and data in, um, to support this work and to support the staffing and the space that we'll need. And again, um, to consider a planning principle, should we open a new building, that would be all part of that collaboration and next steps. So I mentioned some of the other, uh, I guess, little rocks, but when you think about the impact on students, I don't consider them actually so little. Um, we know that we have to have staffing that's aligned to our needs and, at each building. Um, particularly, I'll be bringing to you some work around our lower elementaries and how drastically they have changed over the past five to six years. Uh, we'll be looking to align athletic support and systems and how we're going to bring them under, um, the umbrella of, you know, aligning, making sure that, you know, MHSAA sports are being, um, under the umbrella of someone who's, who's going to support MHSAA sports and then other extracurricular and maybe interscholastic athletics, having conversations around how to best support them. We also need to look at our, uh, what's currently alternative education and making sure that we're having intentionality around next steps in the we're having intentionality around next steps in the Liberty Building, around personalized and innovative learning. And again, like I've said, the elevation of some of our current staff through new partnerships and programming to make sure that we're expanding our leadership across the district. Some of these things, as I mentioned, are already in draft format. And I know you've seen this before, and this was the cardinal directions of the new proposed compass, of which I'd hoped to launch with the team as part of a new strategic plan. And those are the north, the east, the south, and the west. North is to ignite purpose, so I want us to be thinking and visually, close your eyes, right? Think about how stakeholders and you as students and parents wanting to understand learning experiences for students, helping us about reflection and understanding the purpose behind goals and the programs that we offer. East is really exciting, it's a lot of what I've already talked about, exploring possibilities. So what things are out there, haven't we uncovered and risen to the point where we're ready to launch them for our students? From experiential learning, which is a focus countywide, to electives and to some more rigorous experiences at the middle school and potentially high school level. We want to be a place and continue to be a place where imagination and innovation thrives as Celine area schools has been. South is some of the challenges that we're going to face as we go through this work together. We know that we have a diverse group of learners, leaders, and families, and making sure that all voices are heard to make sure we have supportive environments for everyone. And that's a really, a big piece that touches a lot of this work. And what I think I've most been surprised myself with is the connections. Celine area schools is a community that's ripe for opportunities to connect organizations together. I know some of that work has already been lifted in many different respects over the last couple decades, but continue to strengthen that collaboration and that sense of unity across not only schools, but organizations within the Celine community. That all works in with the values of which were identified as part of the work on the new compass, which were integrity, curiosity, community, and growth. So are we as learners, leaders, teachers, staff, acting with honesty, responsibility, and purpose every day, even when no one's watching? Community, again, making sure we have inclusive experiences that are empathetic to all learners, all learners, and care for others and their perspectives? Are we being curious about those perspectives? Are we exploring ideas and showing excitement for learning of all kinds, whether it be Algebra I or learning about other populations and peers? And then that growth. Are we stagnant? Are we waiting to do something with early childhood? Are we building things around, like making that momentum happen for our new families to the Celine area? And so those things provide already a foundation for what I would call where the compass and the strategic plan could collide. Where the compass, there's been so much work already done with the new draft compass that defines and identifies our aspirations as an organization of learners? And do we then collide that with a strategic plan that then defines our priorities and measures our progress? Those two things together this coming spring, if aligned, can create and build a system where every initiative, every budget decision, every decision, which I know there's always curiosity around decisions that are made, and action can be traced back to our purpose and our why and our strategic plan. So our next step together as a governance team is to look at how we do that. We have to have goal-oriented strategies, and these need to have measurable outcomes. So here are some examples that are out there. So if we were to look at the compass and saying igniting purpose, what measurable steps, how are we measuring, are we using to make sure that students and staff are connecting learning to the meaning in classroom? So how are our learning targets being measured beyond M-Step, beyond College Board? For exploring possibilities, how are we expanding access and how are we measuring that? Do we have just more programs, or do we have more programs that have sparked interest and have increased student success? For embracing challenges, how have we had the conversation about closing gaps for students in this district? Because they are there. They were there when I interviewed, and they're still there now, and I haven't moved them with our team yet. And we need to have real conversations about how we do that and what those benchmarks are. And through that work, how do we continue to not sever connections, but build trust, build belonging, and partnership within it? So here are some ideas. And again, this will be posted publicly. I'm not going to read through each one, but I want to actually call out the south, right? So when you have a strategic plan, of which I've shared examples with you all, and I know we had some light conversation in a recent workshop, have we set out in a plan that we're going to close X gap by YY percent by year ZZZ? Those are the things that we need to be focused on and building in terms of, like, we want to do this, but how are we going to measure this? Other ones for purpose would be, again, to strengthen those leadership pipelines, but how are we going to measure that? And how are we going to then connect some of the curriculum pieces and the work with teachers to the new compass? How are we going to build connections? So through listening and learning sessions, what data exists to suggest that there has been follow-through on things that folks are lifting up through those listening and learning sessions? Or are we kind of putting them in a document and walking away? Because I won't lead that work. We have to lift those things out of documents and get them to the reality of our schools. And what's really nice is you can hold me accountable for this work, as we do through the MASB Superintendent Evaluation Model. So there's some examples here of how you would then take our district's strategic plan, and we would then mimic the superintendent goals in our evaluation cycles and the work that we do together. So for instance, have I created, these are examples, don't hold me to these later on unless we've adopted them, but have I created a pipeline framework by fall 2026? You know, either I have or I haven't. And what pieces go into that to plan for that? Some other opportunities I see that are connected with some of these possibilities would be, have we identified by fall 2027 what flexible learning pathways are, and can we articulate them? Can board members articulate them? Can I articulate them? Can our administrative team articulate them? And can the people closest to the work articulate them? Can we develop a childhood expansion plan and a concept for how we're going to, I don't know where we're going to put it, by fall 2026 and having access for the community by 2030? Those are things that we can measure, and you can hold me accountable for. And so here are some next steps, of which I'll be pursuing. The core team and I will meet in mid-November for a retreat, and some of these things will be lifted up there, and we'll bring you some initial feedback on next steps. As you know, I have my evaluation in December, of which some of this work could fit into as well. I'll be asking our admin team to join us for a second retreat in January to look at more of the school-based implications of this work. And I'll be bringing you an update, not a final strategic plan, but an update to you in February with next steps and how we'd like you to help see through some of this work. I'd eventually like to bring you an updated compass within a strategic plan that matches, and you see alignment, by the May 2026 board meeting, of which I'll ask you to, since you'll be part of this work, adopt so that we can carry it through the summer and into next school year. Thank you for your trust in me and my leadership, and I hope this has given some opportunities for conversation and to the community that we're doing the right work. We need to hear more, and I appreciate your trust as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much, especially to our one audience member. That was Tiffany. Thank you. Do you have time for some, let's take a few minutes just to toss any general questions your way. I think we're okay with that, Jason, and I have a few as well.
I love the emerging leadership pipeline. I think that is for the future of the district. I think that's really key. What is one of the first steps that you've identified? You did already say that you talked to building admin about kind of identifying. What's the next step after that?
I can share without super specifics some of our work that we've done actually in the past week and then continuing tomorrow morning. We ask, just as a jumping off point for our administrators, to identify the folks in the building, who they saw as potential leaders that could grow within our system. And we literally created a list. It's an internal list. And from that list, we have administrators who sometimes have things outside the building, and we've asked a couple of those folks already to help us support buildings. And one will return tomorrow to a post to support the building for the day in an elementary school. And these are folks who, you know, previously typically it was done different ways, which were all great as well, but just really allowing them to get into buildings. This particular individual has an admin cert, which is helpful, and getting to experience the day-to-day of a principal, which is really exciting work. So that was one of our first steps.
Thank you. Lauren, Jennifer, Darcy. Jennifer?
I'm thinking too. So thank you for sending this over this afternoon. I was working and flying today, so I do want to stand still with what I heard here and also go back and read and have a little bit more of informed questions for you. But I did have a couple of clarifying things. Could you, I wasn't able, I was trying to read it really quickly. Can you go back to the slide where it says specific ideas? I just, I didn't finish reading a certain part, and I don't want to misconstrue something. Oh, oh, keep going. That was it, that was it. No. It was in the columns. Yes, right there. I just, I didn't finish reading, and I want to make sure that I can read it. Okay, all right, perfect. So the first thing that I really like is that when you gave us a proposal when you were interviewing, you went back to it, and you've been going back to it, and the word accountability means a lot, so thank you. I have to laugh at the rocks. We're playing the Salem Rocks on Friday. I don't know if you know that that's what they're, I went there to the Iron Canton, and so they're the rocks. So I just had to laugh because they'll be here on Friday. I did have a clarifying question on what you mean by the word partner earlier in the slides when you were talking about the leadership pipeline, which I was interested in. And I also had a clarifying question around the term emerging leaders, because that means, I think, to me, it might mean something slightly different than how it's being portrayed here, so I just wanted to make sure. So if we could go back to an earlier slide, it was quite forward, one of the first times when you were mentioning the leadership pipeline, and you talked about partners in the ISD and partners. Yes, yes, exactly. So when you say partner there, can you just help me understand? Because higher education partner and ISD partner could be very, very different things. Are you thinking about third-party providers? Are you thinking consultants? Are you thinking universities? Like, when you say partner there, what does that mean?
That's a great question. So the first conversations came out of, we have individuals on our amazing team who, in order to do some of the administrative tasks that they would need to be able to do, they would need to be credentialed through the state of Michigan. And so it can be challenging when you're in a current role and you'd like to do that, but then, like, there's no program that fits kind of the time constraints. As a result of that conversation, there is another, within our county, within the ISD organization, who also has a number of retirements of principals and leaders in the next couple of years, and they'd like to join kind of that pilot with us.
All right, super. Thank you so much. And so emerging leaders at work means like less experience. So is that not what you're meaning here? Does this mean, because I heard you giving the specific example, which I love hearing about tomorrow, so that's like a little bit more of an elevated position? So for emerging leaders in this reference, it means people going into higher positions versus like high-potential talent that you're identifying a couple years in, like with maybe a new teacher that came in? Like, what does emerging leader mean to you in this instance?
It's both. That list actually has both. We've had that conversation, like, you know, what exactly should I be typing here? And it's both. It's who identified on their own in that personal professional pathway that I want to, you know, do an MASSP program, I want to go get a master's degree in a leadership. And then, like, we know that, and we know that maybe they're looking to be their next step, and it's the folks within our buildings who have consistently demonstrated leadership and that, you know, those people, and I've had the micro, we want to tap them on the shoulder and say, hey, have you ever thought about curriculum development or operations leadership? And so it's both, yeah.
Okay, I like that answer because I was hoping that was both. Because I think sometimes in corporations, education, you name it, people do look at that top layer, and we need to give opportunity to people at all levels of the organization. So I like that. My other question wasn't on any of the slides. I was really interested because you do have experience from outside of Celine, which is nice, and we are student-led and student-forward. So is there anything that you have seen in your time here with regards to our students where you're like, hmm, we could try this, or this would be something exciting I've seen in another district that I've been in or that I've read about? Like, is there anything popping off with you? I kind of went back to the innovation and opportunity lens. Is there anything that we could do for our students that maybe we're not doing that would be exciting and interesting?
I think that the current offerings for our students is just phenomenal. I see things every single day that I haven't seen in my career. And it's, you know, 20 years, it's not 36. But I think we have a great offering for our students, and I see just today, amazing things, amazing offerings and supports. But I also see pretty regularly ways that we can do better. We say a lot in this building and other spaces, know better, do better. And so I think that's just something that kind of carries, we're not reflective as leaders, and we're not reflective even in the classroom. And when I was in the classroom, I tried to model reflectiveness for students. I see some, yes, I do see some more little rocks, of which I'd like to reserve for more strategic planning-type conversations, but there's some, yeah.
Thanks. That was a lot of me. I want to thoroughly give it time and come back to you with more. Thanks.
Lauren or Darcy?
As the board and policy committee, are there pieces of this that you see the board being particularly able to support this work?
I do. I think that the question about students was interesting. I think that my time here has been well-spent getting to know all different types. I want to know more people. But I do think that some systems and structures and processes need some work, which could be supported by the work the board policy committees looking at to do some work on a new policy provider. And we'll need your support behind the strategic plan to hold me and others accountable for this work, is how I would ask that we preliminarily think about how that support plays out. Thank you.
Thank you for this. It's exciting.
Like Jennifer, I didn't get a chance to look at it until this evening. I'm excited by all of it. I did want to just say that I am very excited about the peace with consistency across the schools, because while we come up through different buildings, we all end up in the same community, and setting those expectations and environments early on and making them consistent is helpful for everyone. So thank you.
Thanks, Darcy. Thanks to the rest of the board. Yeah, I had also written down accountability, and I was very interested in reorg and the early childhood push and strategic planning. I'm also curious about metrics, the measurement. You had referred to different kinds of metrics throughout, and I guess there's still a lot to be determined. Yeah, okay. Because some I saw were very, 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 very precise, X percent by such-and-such a year, and there's potentially a lot of wiggle room. And then there were others that were either-or, and some that are based on perception and some that are based on hard data. So I hope that the board will get a chance to get those clarified, what your metrics are throughout.
Michael, that was intentional to show kind of how this could be benchmarked through the lens of like these big overarching goals, and then how like, you know, by this time this year, this is where we would expect to be. And so I did intentionally kind of give some different examples of that. But you all, as the governance team, will be a part of that work in helping set those SMART goals with us along the way.
Excellent. Thank you. Well, I'm looking forward to that. Nothing else from the rest of the board, but thank you very much for the. No, no, this is built right into your contract. I really enjoyed, actually, this was a very impressive piece when you brought this to us during your interviews. And really, you did have me at Succession Plan, which I thought was an excellent thing. All right, oops, should look at the agenda. We have We have one discussion, just one discussion item this evening, and I'll leave, pass the microphone over to Dr. Gold.
The policy committee met this evening, as was brought up last, at our last general board meeting. We are considering seriously a move to the TRUAN policies. So we elected to not do further Neola updates as we may be looking at a switch, and so we instead spent our time together talking about some of the specifics of what a possible move would look like, how to best, sort of the nuts and bolts about how to best learn more about TRUAN because, and hearing our superintendent's sort of vision as to how that policy handbook could better support our administrative team and her team, which was, you know, quite helpful to our work. And so I think next steps for that is that the policy committee will hopefully be hearing from someone directly from the TRUAN policy team, and we will bring that information back to the board. And does anyone from the committee have anything to add?
I would thank you for that opportunity. For those who weren't at the committee, let me just mention, we have had a chance to look at some examples, exemplars, and at the last board meeting, Jennifer Steben brought, Vice President Steben brought up a few questions, four points in fact, and that we are working toward getting those, including, in fact, just this evening, we received a file of all of our Neola policies in one spot, which was item number three. Sadly, we weren't able to open them, so we're working on that. And there are other issues that you had brought up and that we are working on partly behind the scenes. And again, we have a lot of questions as we get closer to this, but I, I'd like to say that we're, we're doing it carefully, step by step, we're getting there. And I thank the whole policy committee for, for that. We've heard, for Jennifer and for Jason's sake, I have heard anywhere from, they recommend optimistically that it's three months to make the transition. Friends of ours over in Chelsea said it's, or Dexter, it's longer, it's more like six months. So this is a long process. There's going to be a lot of heavy lifting, a lot of policies to review, and a lot of eyes crossed as we look back and forth over the two sets and get them, and get it right, and maintain the policies that we as a board have worked on over the years, long before your tenure, and hopefully they will be with us long after all of us roll off the board. And the next folks are here. Thank you. Was that it then? Thank you very much. Consent agenda, please. I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize a consent agenda as printed.
Michael, I apologize. I should have mentioned this at the top of the meeting. Can we pull C out approval for the Board of Education retreat minutes? That's going to come in November.
I'm sorry, it's going to come in November?
In November. It'll show up at our next meeting.
Oh, okay. You'd like it to come at the next meeting. Oh, I see, it's not in the list yet. Oh, I'm sorry, very much. Of course. Yeah, we can easily change that. So I'd like to entertain a motion to authorize a consent agenda as amended.
So moved, Berwick.
Thank you.
Support Tizides.
Thank you, JT. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose? Great, five zero. Thank you so much. Items on the next agenda? Dr. Kowalski?
I am prepared. We have our audit presentation the next for me. I know, I'm so excited. It is going to be thrilling. And we all have a resolution on summer taxes. And I do hear that, I think you alluded to this last time, that you may be discussing the calendar. But we'll take more guidance from you as we delve the agenda.
In November, we usually do have our calendar discussion, and we set dates and carve them into, you know, talcum or chip some. Thank you. Just checking to see if there's anything else. Public comment, we have, oh, one public comment, a member of the public can address the board briefly for up to three minutes. Our secretary is getting the color cards, and the, the person I have is Carmen Lauchu. Did I pronounce your last name correctly?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carmen Lauchu. I'm a junior at the University of Michigan, and I'm, I'm an alum of Celine from the class of 2023. I came as part of a class project to see how local government works, and so far I have definitely got a great new understanding, especially as I had no idea that we have a new superintendent. And I, after seeing your plan laid out, at least from a public perspective, I wanted to ask what the policies for the superintendent and the board are on generative AI, how students and staff will be educated, what your policies are towards that, especially as it's a huge concern right now on my college campus.
Usually during the public comment section, we don't answer questions directly, but I would, no, no, but I would like to invite you to send your questions to me and to the superintendent via email, and we might set up a time to actually talk with you in greater depth.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. The next board meeting will be held on November 11th, 2025, at 6:30. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting at 7:41.
So moved, Tizides.
Support Gold.
Support Gold. Thank you very much. All in favor, please say aye. Five zero it is. Thank you very much, everybody in the audience.